Let me call the May 21st meeting of the Congress Select Board to order. Our first order of business is to approve minutes of April 16th. I have a motion to that effect.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Would the clerk call a roll?
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. It passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a town manager update. Mr. Town Manager. Guess who's muted?
I know. I hate being that guy every single call.
That should be the Time Magazine word of the year. That or social distancing. I'm not sure.
By far, "you're muted" is going to be the number one said phrase in 2020. So, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm just trying to get my notes open here. So, as you all know, Monday, the governor announced Phase 1. Well, he announced all four phases of his plan to reopen the state, but really, our focus is on Phase 1 because I think he made it clear that you don't get to Phase 2 if Phase 1 isn't done effectively and that we still don't know yet. I think we'll be monitoring case data locally and, I think, statewide. But certainly, in terms of opening our offices and things like that to town employees, that has been a heavy focus of our activities this week. First, I'm actually very pleased to announce that most of our outdoor recreational facilities will be open on Memorial Day. White Pond, which will be open for kind of walking and fishing. The beach may not be open. It needs a little more prep time. And so, task court thing, parks, things like that. We said right from the very beginning that reopening our outdoor spaces was priority 1. Priority 1A is getting the Concord Free Public Library reopened as well, but there's a lot more to figure out with the free public library situations because it's both an employee space and a public space. But I appointed a reopen task force of mid-level managers and they've been meeting every day this week. And really, it's been extremely productive, very creative, a great group of people to work with. So, the focus is reopening offices for employees. And once we kind of have that figured out, the guidance is restrictive. It's not easy. We're not just going to open the doors and everybody's going to come back. There's a lot to figure out if you look at the governor's guidance on office spaces. So, we're working through that and we hope to have something announced in terms of opening for employees soon. With regards to opening to the general public, that's going to take even more work. And so, I wouldn't expect, for members of the public, I wouldn't expect that we'll be open next week. I think it'll actually be a few weeks before we have the protocols and equipment we need in place to protect the safety of both employees and residents. So, we just ask people to continue to be patient. One of the things that's clear in the guidance is, you know, groups of 10 or more are still prohibited. Mask wearing is still important. It's still a mandate and both statewide and locally, and social distancing is still required. And I just want to make sure that the community understands that we're thrilled to be able to reopen the recreation facilities. We've gotten a lot of feedback that people really want to get out and play tennis and do all that stuff. And I've said all the way along, we really want to try and make that happen for folks. But I'm begging, quite honestly, if people aren't being responsible and wearing face coverings, social distancing, not being in groups larger than 10, we're going to have to close them again because the guidance is clear. You have to do that stuff to keep the facilities open. And I think the board remembers, when we announced the closure of those facilities, we didn't physically close them, but because we kept seeing, we kept getting reports, but also observing, those guidelines weren't being followed. We had to end up physically closing them. And so, for all those people who have written saying, "Please reopen them," you know, please make sure you take precautions you need to safely. I've gotten a lot of feedback this week about mask wearing and the Board of Health's order as well. And I haven't, I'll be honest, I've heard from a number of residents that haven't responded. I've been working on a response and working with Susan Rasp. The Board of Health has been, they've been kind of talking amongst themselves about whether they need to change the language of the order or refine. You know, to say to members of the community are, you know, the reports of people yelling at others, cursing at other people for not wearing a mask, you know, isn't really, if you really feel compelled to say, to tell someone you have a problem with them not wearing a mask, it's really important you do it with kindness and respect. And for those who go out without a face covering because they believe that they can maintain at least six feet of separation, my suggestion is having a face covering on your person, but not necessarily over your nose and mouth, is also a sign of kindness and respect to those who are anxious by the lack of mask wearing. And it really is a two-way street. And I hear from both sides regularly and I just need to say, you know, it's not an individual's job to enforce the Board of Health's order, but we all have a responsibility to do, you know, everything we can and honestly, go the extra mile. It's clear by now that there is a rift developing between people who don't feel like they need to wear a mask because they can keep separation and people who feel like they should be wearing masks all the time. And I guess I'm on the side of, it isn't as great an inconvenience to have a mask on even if it's not over your nose and mouth. And it has the happy side benefit of reducing the risk of community spread of you getting infected or spreading it to somebody else. And so, that's what I think the intent of the Board of Health's order was. And that's why I think, you know, I supported how it was worded. And so, I hope people who are, if they're hearing this, just understand, you know, the inconsistency between the governor's order and the Board of Health's order really isn't the issue. It's what's the right thing for us to do for each other so we can prove that we can handle this reopening. So, again, I feel like I do this every week, but I think the board knows. I'm sure you all get contacts from people as well. This is a big issue and people are really concerned about it. So, I hope people will take that advice to heart. So, in addition to the reopening of town offices, we have some regular business things going on. I know the Climate Action Plan is a long-awaited report that's been the work of a dedicated committee as well as many hours of town staff. It's, I saw kind of an initial draft of it. It's really an excellent, excellent report. Or certainly, the format of it is very approachable. Our Sustainability Director Kate Hanley has done a masterful job, you know, squiring that through numerous processes. So, there is a final draft. It did have a review with the Climate Action Plan Committee. We got some great feedback. We're going to keep working towards the final draft. One of the things that's interesting is CDC guidance for surface contact changed a little bit overnight. I saw that in the news this morning. And so, both for the reopening of our facilities as well as, meaning our recreational facilities and our town facilities, that guidance, that change is significant. And so, that's something, basically, they said the risk is much lower than they initially thought it was. So, our concerns of people playing frisbee and spreading it through, you know, droplets on hard plastic, the research suggests that the probabilities are actually pretty low. But it's still important to hand sanitize, wash your hands as often as possible. So, speaking of that, a couple of water-related things. The CPW is going, our Water and Sewer Department is going to be participating in a program to sample wastewater to collect data on potential, you know, to see if there's any COVID-19 traceable in wastewater. And that's part of a sort of broader study. And so, they're trying to get municipal wastewater treatment plants to see if they can, if they find it or submit samples for testing. And the other thing is, for water customers, there'll be a notice going out about regulatory exceedance for Bromate. Bromate is a byproduct of ozonation, which is, in addition to being a fantastic word, it is our water treatment process. And so, it is technically, like I said, it's a technical regulatory exceedance. So, the notice is required, but it is not a public health threat. There's no need to boil water, do any of that stuff. And if people have questions, they can check CPW website or maybe give a call, but just bearing in mind that, you know, we are limited staffing. And I think that's about it for me. Thank you.
Questions, Jane?
Stephen, one, this is exciting about the program that obviously Alan and the Water and Sewer Department has been accepted into. I know that when he was first looking into it, it wasn't clear, you know, how many municipalities would be able to participate. That's really exciting. Second question for you was, I mean, I assume this is part of every, is this a normal spring water treatment? Yeah. So, this is, this has nothing to do with COVID. This is just what we do in, okay.
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's not. I've never even heard of COVID being present in water sources. I don't think that's...
I wasn't suggesting it was.
Yeah. No. Yeah. I mean, I did say one after the other. One's wastewater, one's water supply. And you're right, Jane, that distinction needs to be a little clearer for folks. And I did forget two things about masks. One is the Water Department also participated in a, I think it's a federal program through the EPA and then delivered locally through DEP, through Massachusetts DEP. They're getting about 100 reusable masks for their team at no charge. So, that's a good benefit. And, you know, our departments have been ordering a lot of masks and PPE for our own protection for employees for out there. We had kind of a happy accident, one of our orders for the light plant. And so, we got extras. And so, I was able to get 100, I believe, reusable cloth. They're definitely cloth masks. I believe they are reusable. And I have set those aside and offered them through the Economic Vitality Committee members to do a business group that's getting together in this very difficult time called Concord Together. And I'm going to get them over to that group so they can distribute them to employers, businesses, and their employees. Because we were at, Susan, if you're, we were asked about that, about being able to help get masks. So, when I found out we had a bunch of extras, I said, "Can I just get 100 of them?" And, you know, whether it's 20 businesses getting five for themselves and their employees or they hand them out one at a time, I'm not determined to leave that up to Concord Together. But hopefully, when businesses reopen, we can help provide a measure of safety.
Thank you. Terry?
Stephen, I'm really excited that we're going to be opening a lot of outdoor facilities. It's great. And you might have seen my email. This one person had a question about if it's at Willard School and it's the tennis courts there are locked up. Is that something that the school committee has to unlock them? Or is that part of our, are those tennis courts a town facility that you're going to be able to unlock?
I actually honestly don't know the answer to that, Terry. I'll look into it.
Okay. Yeah. I just want to, and I think your point is right. This person who wants to play there should, you know, help, you know, help enforce or politely, but you're right, there's a rift absolutely forming and people need to be respectful and polite on both sides, athletes. And I think at the end of this meeting, I was in a meeting earlier today with the Committee on Disabilities and they had a few ideas about how we can do that. And they want to speak in the public comment at the end. And my last thing is a question. What did you say about the library? I think I heard you say maybe in a few weeks it might start to open?
Well, the library is, like I said, the priority 1 is outdoor recreational facilities. 1A is library. So, and actually, I blew that. The Minuteman Library Network has actually developed a, I think, a software platform for a curbside book process. And that gets launched, I think, on June 1st. And so, the main branch of the Concord Library, I believe, will have that going starting June 8th. It's going to take some, you know, no one's really effectively been in the, I mean, people have been in the building, but no one's really effectively managed the processes for two and a half months. So, we need some startup time between now and the 8th. So, I don't see the building physically reopening yet, but certainly, curbside will start. We're going to have a lot, and honestly, the news about the contact surface, the surface contact guidance was so helpful. And I immediately thought about the library this morning when I heard that. And then naturally neglected to mention it when I was talking about that data. But no, that's, so the, curbside will start on June 8th at the library.
Wonderful.
Susan?
I just wanted to mention that in one of those, you provide us with a lot of information on a daily basis, Stephen. And one of the reports noted that the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development in the, at the state level, said that there's, the state website has a portal that businesses can go to to find out where they can get PPE and sanitizer and the things that all these people are going to need when they open the doors.
Yeah. We've been sharing that information through Beth Williams. And there's also a community development block grant funding source through DHCD as well that communities or businesses can apply for, for assistance. I did, it's called a NOFA, a Notice of Funding Availability, came out, I think, maybe yesterday. And so, we did share that with Beth and John Harrison, Brandon Roberts, our kind of economic, you know, business support team right now. And so, I think it's going to be competitive. So, I want to make sure we try and get something in as soon as possible. So, I'm asking them to find out what ideas could be, you know, do they have that could support local business or other needs that may be unmet at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I would just add, Stephen, I think you started to talk about it briefly before we actually convened the meeting. But earlier today, Stephen, Dean Vanfield, the Chair of the Finance Committee, the Town Moderator, and I met with our counterparts in Carlisle to talk about how we were both thinking about town meeting and trying to see if we could share enough information to keep ourselves somewhat coordinated as we unfold this process. I thought that was a very good meeting and shared a lot of useful information. And I suspect we'll probably meet again.
Yeah. Mike, if I can just build on that point, the focus obviously was town meeting. And the nexus for us is obviously the regional school district. And so, we had a lot of talk about timing of town meeting, but then the talk quickly pivoted to the timing of the really the state budget process. And we don't know. In fact, a member of the Carlisle Finance Committee, I think, does in fact work for the state. And I don't think any specific information was offered there either. So, we, I think there are a lot of unknowns about the state budget. And I don't want to, I almost hesitate to do this because I don't have any facts, but I've heard people talking about their estimates or their assumptions without really, I don't think anything of it's from the state, but it could be a range of the reduction in state funding, we'll get through it, or a reduction in state funding that would have a serious impact on all municipalities, including Concord. And until we know more about that, it's really hard to finalize the budget. And I don't care, if you wanted to offer anything on that as well, but that's, nobody really knows where the state's going. Yep. I don't put her, don't put her in her spot. So, anyway, there was a lot of discussion about that. And Carlisle's in the same place as us where we just, we don't feel like we can finalize our budget.
Right. All right. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is to consider changes to the charter and extension of the charge of the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee. And Sig, you're with us, so.
Yeah. Hi. How are you?
Greetings. I think first order of business, if you could just briefly tell the board your, the committee's intention by this recommendation.
Okay. Thanks. There are two general issues with the charge that we felt we needed to change. One was that we've had an impossible time getting membership from all of the committees that were originally contemplated, the town committees. In particular, we couldn't get anyone from the Board of Health to join us. So, that's, the reason for that change is that we just feel that we should stop trying to do that and just put another member of the public on. So, that's why three citizens at large rather than two citizens at large. The other change is focused generally on the fact that as we've done our work, we've learned that really, we started out being concerned with neonicotinoids and their impact on pollinators. But we've learned that there are really many other pesticides that can cause pollinator issues and in fact, other kinds of environmental issues. So, rather than focus simply on neonicotinoids, we wanted to expand our purpose to look at issues and educate on neonicotinoids and other pesticides and expand not just to concern ourselves with impact on pollinators, but impact on the environment generally.
Okay. And although it wasn't, I don't recall seeing it in the memorandum from your committee chair in this, but you would like your charge extended until May of 2021?
Right. We like doing this so much that we want to keep on going.
That's just right. Are there any questions for Sig?
I had a question in terms of your meetings and the Ag Committee because it seems to me that, you know, tight coordination or certainly communication, especially as we go into another growing season, might be useful.
Yeah. We have, Brian Kramer is on both committees. He does the job well. I mean, there's no question that we know what they're doing and they know what we're doing. Is that was your issue?
It's not an issue. It's just a reiteration for anyone watching that, you know, that that's going to be very important.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. And Brian's doing it and well.
So, in that, Mike, may I?
Linda, please.
Yeah. In that same vein, while you may be having difficulty getting a representative from the Board of Health, will you continue to, if you have any recommendations or so forth, outreach to them to get their feedback? Because I think that seems to be valuable.
Yeah. Well, we've tried. I don't know what more we can do other than to let them know what we're doing. But it would be great. I would rather not give up on trying to get someone from the Board of Health to join us, but if we can't, we can't.
So, Linda's point was whether or not there's a representative on your committee, it would probably be wise to, anytime you folks were planning any kind of action or recommendation, to make sure you at least solicited the input of the Board of Health. And I'm sure you would do that.
We've been doing that. Yeah.
Very good. Any additional questions or comments? So, if there's no objection, Linda, I'd propose that we move, that we accept these changes and extend the charge of the committee until May of 2021.
So, move.
Is there a second? Say it, please.
Second.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Yes, Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. And I note that it passes unanimously. Thanks, Sig.
Great.
Appreciate your color.
Thanks. Take it easy.
The next item on our agenda is to extend the charge of the Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw Committee. And we are joined, we were joined. Ms. Keel? There he is.
Hi, Keith. Hi, Mike. Hello.
So, would you tease this up for us?
Sure. Keith Bergman, 56 White Ave, reporting from my front porch and chairing the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee, whose term of office is set to expire on May 31st. And that date was, we've been extended a number of times, most recently, to so that we would be in existence for about a month following the date, the planned date of the annual town meeting in April. From the discussion last week at the Chair Breakfast Meeting hosted by Mike, it seemed that it was appropriate to request an extension of the committee's existence. I would say probably a month, the end of the month that follows the date of the annual town meeting. And I would defer to you all on when that is. If, from the discussion of its plan for September, then the term through October 31st might be appropriate if it's just by way of example. But we do want to do some outreach leading up to the town meeting when it is held. And we would be, want to stay on for a month beyond the date of that town meeting. And so, that's the request.
Thank you. Are there questions for Keith?
So, hi, Keith, Linda Escobedo. This is not so much a question as a comment to all of us to consider. The extension that occurred for that committee was vis a vis reappointment to extend through May 31 as opposed to changing anything in the charge. So, I'm not sure how we want to, if we want to do that same thing again or if we actually want to change the language in the charge. And if we do change the language in the charge, I just want to point out to Jeremy, it's helpful in the reprint of the charge, to be sure, in the upper right-hand corner, to note the date that the amendment was made.
Got you.
Yes. Thank you, Linda. I think that the extending to the membership of committees until the end of town meeting was something we did handle before, as I recall, in amending APP 10, but that's what it was. But I think that, I think for this purpose, we need to keep the committee intact as well as its membership. So, my suggestion would be that the motion be to continue the charge of this committee until 30 days following the annual town meeting. And that way, it would give them a little bit of time after the town meeting in case there's some cleanup that has to happen or some other action that's taken at town meeting for them to continue to participate. Well, that's my two cents on that, Jane.
So, what you're saying is we don't need to say a date. Let's just say, we'll just pivot it to or pin it to the town meeting.
Yeah. Why not? We don't know.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Just be doing it over and over again. We keep pushing.
Right. The only thing is, there is still a possibility, I guess, that we might have some kind of accounting that's very limited in September and maybe only do one, two, two else of the budget or not do anything else. I really don't know yet. So, maybe it needs to be extended until we have a town meeting that addresses this bylaw, which I hope it comes soon, but it may be next spring by the time we get to it.
Well, Terry is right that the way the Town Moderator has talked to us, that if there is still a public health risk, she would likely propose that many of the articles that are on the current town law be postponed indefinitely. And I don't know yet because we haven't made a decision about that, which of the articles it would be, but it could be the case that this would be one that would be postponed. So, I think your idea is a good one. Why don't we, why don't, can you cast that in some language that the clerk could read, Terry?
Well, I would propose that the extension be granted until such time as town meeting is able to vote on the proposed bylaw that this committee is developing.
By proposed warrant article?
Right.
Linda, did you catch enough of that to say it?
I hope so.
So, before I ask you to do that, please, are there other questions or comments that the board has? All right. And Linda, I would propose that you...
Give it a try, right? Move to extend the charge of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee to be granted until such time as the proposed warrant article that the committee is responsible... such time as the proposed warrant article that the committee is responsible for is covered, or is included and addressed in the 2020, in the next town meeting, I guess, annual town meeting.
Is that clear enough to everybody? So the charge is being extended until the warrant article is addressed by town meeting? Yes, Susan?
Did you want to put 30 days after that?
Yes, we did. So it's, so the motion is, the charge of the committee will be extended until, will be extended 30 days after the annual town meeting addresses the warrant article. All right. Is that clear? And if it is, could somebody please second?
Well, don't even say town meeting, just say town meeting, just in case it's a special.
Okay. The charge of the committee will be extended 30 days beyond a town meeting in which this warrant article is addressed.
Second.
And is there a second then?
Yes. Second.
Thank you. Any further comments? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Satchukas?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, and I note it passes unanimously. Thank you, Keith.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it a lot. And if I could, just thank you to the, to the town employees and, and our leadership. You're doing a great job for us during this time, and it's very much appreciated.
The next item on our agenda is a vote to authorize bonds. CFO of the floor?
Good afternoon. Last week, we received bids on, actually both bonds and a short-term note. The bonds in the amount of $5,665,000, and it was a 10-year issue, and a one-year note in the amount of $3 million. We received six bids on the bonds, and we ranked them according to true interest costs. We take the, the original interest cost and we net out the premium to the true interest cost. The lowest bid was received by Fidelity Capital Markets, and the true interest cost is 0.848%, which includes a premium of $948,000. I did provide you a tabulation showing all of the six bids, and you'll note that the spread on, from the, the best bid, the least favorable bid was 0.145%, which was very tight, but it was, it's actually about double what it was last year.
That's right.
Somewhat surprising. So, as is allowed in the original authorization of the debt, we are able to resize the issue to take into account the premium. So while we were, we took bids on $5,665,000, taking into account the premium, we're able to reduce that issuance to $4,925,000. So the remainder of the premium goes to pay for the issuance costs, which were about $76,000. The estimated savings as a result of, of the premium is, to the median household, over the life of the bond, is $102.41. I did provide you a list in the memorandum of the items to be permanently financed through this issue, and, and you've seen this before, because this is the third time I've been in front of you on this particular issue for different legal requirements. We then received five bids on the notes. The winning bid was from Piper Sandler and Company with a net interest cost of 1.04%. So it's interesting to note that the 10-year bonds received a more favorable bid than the one-year note. The one-year note will go to partially financed water system improvements, which really is the treatment plant that was authorized under Article 28 of the 2016 Annual Town Meeting. As I mentioned to you last week, we went through a rating review, and the town, the town's AAA bond rating was confirmed, so that was good. As the treasurer last week, I temporarily accepted the best bids on both the bonds and notes on behalf of the town. The item before you this, this afternoon is to, to finalize that acceptance on both the, the bonds and the notes. I also included some comparison data on the, you know, how we did in comparison to other AAA-rated communities last week. I don't have this available to share on the screen, but it was included in your packet. You can see that, that we, our issue, even though it was a 10-year issue, and the other two issues were 30-year issues, we, we did quite favorable. In, in some instances, one of the communities got slightly better rates than we did in some of the specific years. And I think that has to do with the length of the, of the issue. Sometimes, you know, a 30-year issue maybe is, is what a, the, an investment firm is looking for, and so they, they price that a little more competitive than a 10-year issue. Unfortunately, this is one item that requires a big vote, your part, big in, in terms of the number of words, and the vote does need to be read into, in its entirety. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Karen? Seeing.
I'll just make one quick comment, however. Some, some of you may have heard at the Finance Committee that Carrie and her department were recognized as rock stars on this item. And I have to say, that was the best retort, her, her reaction to that comment was the best retort I had heard all week. And that was, yes, thank you, that's what we always knew.
If I could add one thing, not to what Linda said, but one thing I wanted to mention to you, you know, typically, as you know, we have town meeting in April, and we do this bond issue in May or June. And so we have to make estimates on what we think the debt service, the annual debt service, will be related to the bond issue while we're putting the budget together. One of the reasons that we typically end the fiscal year with a little bit extra in our debt service appropriation is because we're conservative in the estimate on, on the annual debt service. Because we've had town meeting, we don't have any way to account that savings. So this year, because town meeting is happened, happening after the bond issue, what we will be able to do is go back and revise what we've included in the budget for, for debt, annual debt service for this particular group of projects. And that revision will be close to $90,000. That will be one reduction to the budget that was put forward back in December. On the downside, that means we've already taken it into account, so it won't become part of our free cash at the end of next fiscal year. But I think, given everything that's happening, people will appreciate that we're able to take that savings now.
Yep, I agree. Thank you. Are there any questions for Karen? All right. Are, is there any objections to proceeding with the motion? Seeing none? Linda?
Okay. This is a long one, as Carrie indicated. Move that the sale of the $4,925,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2020 bonds of the town dated June 18th, 2020, referred to as the bonds, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of $5,727,399.21. An accrued interest is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on June 15th of the year, and in the principal amounts, and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. The interest rate that will be referenced is 5% for all, all the items I will now read. For the year 2021, in the amount of $870,000. 2022, in the amount of $795,000. 2023, in the amount of $790,000. 2024, in the amount of $680,000. 2025, in the amount of $665,000. 2026, in the amount of $230,000. 2027, in the amount of $230,000. 2028, in the amount of $230,000. 2029, in the amount of $230,000. And in the year 2030, in the amount of $205,000. We also moved to approve the sale of $3 million at 2% general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated June 19th, 2020, and payable June 18th, 2021, subsequently referred to as the notes, to Piper Sandler and Company at par in accrued interest rate, interest plus a premium of $28,620. Move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 6, 2020, and a final official statement dated May 13th, 2020, each and in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby advised, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Move that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events, disclosure undertakings, in compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12, in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference to the bonds and notes as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Move that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds and notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to the document by electronic mail, in a PDF file, or by other electronic transmission, shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents, and all matters related thereto, having the same legal, legal effect as original signatures. Move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedure in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and notes, and to comply with relevant security laws. Move that each member of the select board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions, and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Satchukas?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, and I note it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Carrie. Appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is a consolidation of polling locations for the June 11th, 2020. The town clerk is with us. Madam Town Clerk?
Thank you very much. I'm here, I'm Kari Maitari here, and I'm here on behalf of the Board of Registitors to ask for your support and vote to consolidate polling locations to the Concord Carlisle Gymnasium, large, air-conditioned space that can accommodate the five precincts for the June 11th election only. The registrars met last Wednesday, had good discussion, had input from League of Women Voters members, and the reasons that they recommend this action is out of concern for the health and safety of our voters and our election workers, the fact that fewer than half of our election workers are able to work at the polls. A centralized location will facilitate cleaning of the voting booths when voters do use them. And a large number of voters are already voting absentee or early. The latest numbers that I have is, that we've sent out, 477 absentee ballot applications and 298 early ballot applications, total of 770. Last year, the voter turnout with one race in the election was a little over 1,400 voters, so we're more than halfway there with mail-in voting already. I have consulted with Health Director Susan Rask, and I have visited the school, and with thanks to Dr. Hunter for allowing us to use the space, and Michael Mustruolo, Jared Stanton for helping coordinate everything, and Russell, the facilities director, who allowed me to, to walk through the gymnasium and location. I will also be visiting the location with Walter Lada, Assistant Fire Chief, and Kevin Monahan, Police Lieutenant, to make sure that all health and safety measures are in place. Now, the entrance that we would propose is to the right of the cafeteria entrance that, that is used for town meeting. The entrance to the right actually has parking that is closer to that entrance. There is a long hall, which will allow for the, the distancing, if people, if there is a line. And the entrance would be from, from that end of the gym, so from the opposite end of the cafeteria. And we can easily accommodate five precincts inside this location. After voting, voters would exit out of the entrance into the cafeteria and exit out of those doors. And if, if you vote to support this, then we will have to send a notice out to all voters, which we would do by postcard mailing at least two weeks before the election, which is also another opportunity to remind them on how to vote early by mail. Because while, you know, we've reached a lot of people through social media and electronic means, there are still a lot of people who don't use that type of technology, and this would be a wonderful way to reach out to them as well.
Would it, would, I think we may have, it appears to me as if she's frozen.
Oh, no.
No. Somebody waved their magic unfrozen wand. There it is. Are you back?
I'm here. Did you not hear all of what I said?
We can hear you now, but you looked, you looked like we lost you for a minute. Perhaps you could just take this opportunity too, to explain to people what they should do if they'd like an absentee ballot.
Absolutely. So we have absentee ballots, and we have early ballots. And the, the difference primarily is that absentee, typically you need a, a reason to vote absentee, whereas an early ballot is just to ask for a ballot without any reason that you're asking, other than you don't want to vote in person. So, all that people really need to do is send us a request that is signed. You can email the request, but we need to have that signature, including your name, date of birth, your legal voting address, and the address to mail the ballot. And that's really all we need. That signature is important, though.
It has to be a physical signature?
It needs to be a physical signature, but you can, you know, jot a note down, take a picture with your smartphone, and email that to us at townclerk@concordma.gov. We also have the applications on our website, on the Town Clerk's page. Erin Stevens has, has done a nice job putting a notice right on the town's front page that, that will link a person right to our page that has all of the information in the forums. And I'd also like to thank the League for doing a, a public service announcement that I was involved with to explain how to vote early. So, and they also have some PowerPoints that are on our website, and also on the League's website, on, just to really break it down and explain to people how to do it.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions for the town clerk?
Carrie, I know you're anticipating a, a light count, because so many have mailed in their ballots ahead of time. And you probably took this into consideration, but should in Clement Weather Day, is there going to be any kind of, is there a plan for how people would line up?
Well, the benefit of this particular entrance is that there's a, a long hallway. So I don't think it will be any problem at all.
Good.
With lining people up. And, and for town elections. And and for town elections, we don't, we don't typically have a huge turnout, but because we're, polling hours would still be from seven AM until eight PM, there is plenty of time to allow for, you know, to to keep any kind of lines from forming, I think. And, you know, right now, people are still being advised not to go out unless it's, you know, for for those emergency supplies or, you know, doctors, things like that. So people are tending not to want to go out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Well, this seems to be a very well-thought-out plan, and I just want to thank you, Kari, and thank the School Department. I think it's probably going to go really well.
Thank you. I want to thank Pat and Nate in my office for doing all this work. And when you think about seven hundred seventy-five absentee and early ballot applications, you know, right now we're getting upwards of sixty requests a day. So it's busy here, and they are really keeping up with it well.
Karen?
I had one question with less to do with how we we vote on the eleventh, but more to do with the the elections that are being voted on. There's been a big lag in terms of communication between when we were expecting to vote at the end of of March and then June eleventh, and I'm wondering, are there any processes in place to sort of renew people's understanding of the elections?
As far as who's running?
Who's running, any of that? I mean, you know, typically the the League of Women Voters hold the forum right beforehand. I mean, it's just there's, the momentum is different now.
Though that they've talked about holding a forum, I'm not sure if they have already.
Yes. It's on Wednesday, May twenty seventh.
Perfect.
Candidates Forum, held by the League. It'll be held by Zoom, and it's going to have all the people running for election. So I guess look on the League of Women Voters' website, or maybe they can hook up with you, Kari, or whatever, but no, it's on the twenty seventh, next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
And I'll also say that that the voter registration deadline, even though we already had one for this election because it's been delayed, we have another voter registration deadline, which is ten days before the election, so June first will be a voter registration deadline.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions for the town clerk, I think we're ready for a motion, Linda.
Move to consolidate the polling locations to the Concord Carlisle High School Gymnasium for the June eleventh, two thousand twenty town election.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, for the discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, and I note it passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie, very much.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is to authorize me to send a congratulatory letter to Cho, recognizing the award of a National Merit Scholarship. Mr. Cho is a student at Middlesex School, and I've reached out to the head of Concord Academy, Mr. Hardy, and to our own superintendent, Dr. Hunter. And my hope is that when we hear back from them at a subsequent meeting, we'll be able to do the same thing that I'm recommending for Mr. Cho for those additional students. So this is quite a, quite an accomplished young man, a pianist of some note already. And so I would be willing to have a motion to authorize me to generate a congratulatory letter to Mr. Cho.
Move to authorize the chair to send a congratulatory letter to Mr. Cho.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Linda, will you please call the roll? Sorry.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
I note that it passes unanimously. The next item of business is miscellaneous correspondence. We still receive one, one, the latest one was this morning, from citizens asking for a copy of the Hunt Letter Plan that we have sent off. We also received, I think, two to the town manager, a letter from Anna Rasmussen, I think it was yesterday, I'm not sure, concerned about her property. I'd like to turn to public comments. If anyone has a public comment, please unmute yourself or whatever it might be, and we'll call on you. Yes, please go ahead, Carolyn.
Hi, this is Carolyn Reed, eighty-three Wits End, on behalf of the League of Women Voters. Kari, thank you very much for participating in that video, and thank you also for asking the question about what the League is doing on behalf of the promoting the election. The program that will be on Minutemen Media Network on May twenty seventh, thank you, Terry, you were right, at three PM. So we're hoping you're going to join us and watch it on MMN TV. I'm not sure if it's going to be streamed live, but it will at least be recorded. We'll have a moderator and the candidates. Thank you.
And am I remembering correctly that there is a way for citizens to submit questions?
Yes, there is, and it's to be sent in as quickly as possible so that we can get it in. And you can send it to president@lwvcc.org if you wish. Thank you, Mike.
Do you think it would be appropriate, Stephen, for us to see if we could get Erin to plug a link or something on the homepage or in news notices? Would that be appropriate?
Sure. Sure. Carolyn, if you, Carolyn, if you have a, like, a flyer, for lack of a better term, and you wanted to send that to Erin Copy Me, I'll make sure she puts something out about it.
Will do. I'll work with Judy Zahn, Barker, and Susan Fry about that. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Carolyn. Are there any additional comments, public comments? Yes?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mary Beth.
Thank you. My name is Mary Beth Barker. I live at forty-nine Seymour Street. And I just wanted to ask, I don't know that I have the answers to this, but I wanted to ask the select board to give it some consideration. I am a person that I have a disability, and although I also serve on the Disability Commission, I'm speaking for myself, open meeting laws, I can't really speak for other people on the commission. And I have noticed that it has become more and more difficult, and for people who have physical disabilities, not just mobility ones, I myself have a mobility disability, but people with other disabilities, such as, you know, maybe visual impairment, people who are blind, that it has become almost impossible to be able to use some of the trails, the, like, the Bruce Freeman Trail and other parks, or that, you know, we're, which is, were specifically designed, some of them, to be sensitive to people with disabilities. And some of what is going on is that there are athletes, bicyclists and jogger, and jog, you know, joggers, runners, who feel like they don't want to use a mask because maybe it impairs their ability, you know, they're exerting a lot of energy, and I can understand why they won't. But when you're a person who uses a wheelchair or you use a walker or some other device, cane, whatever, you really don't have the liberty to just step off the trail. You're just, you can't do that. You can't step into the woods. And I have seen that it's even difficult for able-bodied people. They don't want to step into the woods and be exposed to ticks and things. But if somebody with a visual impairment, person who's blind, you know, their cane can help them find their way on the trail, their cane can help them hear that maybe there's someone coming, but it doesn't tell them whether or not that person wears a mask, has a mask on, and is is going to, is going to move over for them to give them the six-foot social distancing. And it's just, it's something that's becoming, I feel, you know, I see, I I watch, I read the social media site Next Door Neighbor, and I see more and more this attitude developing of, well, if you have a problem, then if you have some kind of an immune compromise condition, or if you're not safe, then don't, then don't, stay home, stay out of the way. And I don't think that's the right thing to do. I think that there needs to be a greater education or sensitivity to why you need to wear masks, I mean, for everybody, but I'm speaking right now particularly as a person with a physical disability that I rely on my wheelchair, I have a special walker that I use, and I can't step off the sidewalk unless there's a curb cut. I can't step off the trail into the woods. Devices aren't designed for that, you know. So I wanted to ask people on the board to give it some thought, and I don't know if there are recommendations can be made about better enforcement or special hours, special athlete-free hours, or special safe zones for people who, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
All right. Thank you, Mary Beth. I would suggest that we, but I would also suggest that you return to your Disability Commission and ask them the same question, and...
We've discussed it, yeah.
Perhaps your commission could come back to the select board with some set of recommendations or thoughts about how we might proceed. And when you've done that, why don't you shoot me a note, and we'll get you on the agenda for our next meeting, and we'll, we'll have a discussion about that. I think it's a pretty important point, so let's, let's get right to work.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will ask them to put it on the agenda for discussing it next week. Thank you.
Are there any additional public?
Yes, please. May I, may I speak?
Who is, who is this?
This is Suzanne A. Kay from three six six, Esterbrook Road.
Sure, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. This is just written six or seven sentences. The Robb family and the Kay Reed Family Council, Mr. Nisselk, has requested to discuss with the town the currently closed nine-hundred-foot section of our private trail at the end of Esterbrook Road. We have not gotten a reply from the town, and we, like the town, would like a cost-efficient solution. And as it has been explicitly stated that our select board members will not speak with us directly, we are publicly requesting a response. Please understand that this is in part an effort to address the issues of ongoing vandalism and abuse, such as the smearing of excrement and repeated urination on property owners' gates and stone walls. Actually, Mr. Lawson, you referred to that communication from Anna Rasmussen earlier, I believe. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comments? I don't see anybody. If that is the case, then I would propose, Madam Clerk, that we...
Mike, before we, before we adjourn, I wanted to, I I know we talked about starting our liaison updates, and I don't think we're quite ready, but I did want to give a, an update on our NAGOG efforts, if that's an option.
Sure.
Okay, and this is really important because we've had a number of, it's been a while since we've discussed NAGOG as a select board, or at least the updates to it. This is clearly an important project for Concord and and our public water accessibility. And there have been some, three, three advances that are worthy of noting. First, it references the status of our Water Management Act litigation with Littleton and Acton. And the the short form of that is that the the SJ, that Littleton, Acton, and Concord all filed appeals or filed appeals, all three towns were granted the, were agreed to submit an application for direct appellate review to the Supreme Judicial Court. And the SJC agreed to hear the case on direct appellate review on May thirteenth, which reduces the amount of time for the entire appeals process and reduces the cost of the appeals. So as there's only going to be one SJC, one appeal to the SJC rather than the potential for two layers of appeal with a preliminary review of the of the court. Littleton and Acton are going to be filing theirs June twenty-second, and Concord will have thirty days to to, to respond. So that's one movement forward. Second, and perhaps more important, is that the, is the status of the special permit for the, from the Acton Board of Selectmen for the construction of the NAGOG Pond Water Treatment Facility and intake, and the intake pipe replacement. This is the meeting that happened on the nineteenth, and the Acton Select Board decided to extend the special permit for the construction through January sixth, twenty twenty-two, which is the same expiration date for the, the Order of Conditions for the Water Treatment Plant issued by the Conservation Commission. This is going to be extremely helpful. We were, we were past the technical initial special permit date, but that had been extended under the COVID nineteen. This gives us a concrete extension. And the final piece, and obviously Concord, Concord will be, has been and will be, continue to work very closely with the officials from the town of Acton. One of the important parts of that special permit is a communications plan, which Concord submitted a first draft of, and I know that we're working through components of that with Acton to make sure that it it meets everybody's needs. And the final piece is our Chapter one ninety-one license from the Mass DEP. This is for our intake project, which is the first phase of any effort at NAGOG. And Concord filed for a Chapter ninety-one license in February of twenty nineteen. It's been a very long process, unusually so, and we hope to see the license issued very soon. So that's, that's NAGOG in very short order. But with, I I do want to give kudos to both our council and, most importantly, our, our Water and Sewer and and Public Works Department. This has been an incredible process to have witnessed over the last four years.
Indeed. Thank you very much for that update. I appreciate that. I want to say that at the, our meeting next, next Thursday at the same time, we'll have two, we'll have a number of agenda items, but I just want to call out the fact that we will receive from the town and from the regional district their one-twelfth spending plan to go forward, so we will have the opportunity to receive those. I know they've been working on them, and receive them next time, and hopefully we'll get them a little bit ahead of time so we have a chance to review them, but those will be very important agenda items for us next time so they can get these plans submitted to the Department of Revenue so that we'll be ready to go July first. Is there no other comments?
I, I have a comment. This is Brooks Reed at three sixty-six Esterbrook Road. You mentioned earlier that my across-the-street neighbor, Anna Rasmussen, submitted a letter. I also submitted a letter this week regarding the alteration of public comments submitted for the April sixteenth Select Board Meeting, and I wonder if you could just acknowledge that you've received that communication from me earlier this week?
I think, Mark, we did receive it, but I thought it was addressed to the town manager.
It had your name, it had all the select board members' names, it had the town manager's names, and it was also submitted into public info at conquerdmat.gov. And it has not been put in the record along with all the other public comments submitted to the, that address, and it remains unincluded in that information, and I would appreciate if it was included along with other people's comments.
Thank you. There's no other comments from the public? I haven't seen one. I would entertain a motion, George Earn.
Don't move.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
It passes unanimously. I thank you all very much for attending, and we'll see you next Thursday at four o'clock.